Meeting, I'll just open with Kierke, Kierke to my Tamada Matanga, Kierke to my Tarangi Maori, Kierke to my Takaha, Matei Arroha, Mo Teneko Papa, Huiye, Tai Kie. A couple of housekeeping, we've got a number of people attending via Zoom, so I think we have two councillors, councillor Hill and councillor Walker, Mr Kirby from Tasman District Council, and then later on, I think we have Sue Sheldon coming in for the Infrastructure Holdings Limited reports. So again, joint meeting, obviously a bit of mix of Zoom and in the room, so everyone I guess knows the protocols around that. And also a number of people who will come in via Zoom in relation to the housing report that is contained within the agenda. Before we get underway, we have apologies from councillors Butler, Maru, Rollo, Rainey, Sanson and Benj. Someone like to move the apology? Moved Mayor Smith, seconded councillor Skinner, all those in favour please say aye. Against carried, the order of business is as contained in the agenda. Declaration of Interests, any interests in which is declared in relation to the meeting, if not, no public forum. Confirmation of minutes from the 14th of November meeting 2023, someone move councillor Mailing, seconded councillor Paki Paki, no questions, all those in favour please say aye. Against carried. Right, so now we'll go into the first of the six monthly strategic presentations. Nicky, you have got a covering report. I don't know if you'd like to say anything before we invite the airport up to talk to their.
With the chair, there's no covering report, these are just strategic presentations from the three entities today, so I think the first one is the airport.
It is. Righto, representatives of the airport, Mark, if you'd like to come down. And Adrian, welcome. I will hand over to you gentlemen.
Kia ora, thank you. We're on a timeline here, so I'll rip through this as fast as I can fly. Or sail. So slide deck is where? Here, cool. We'll go to. Sitting here. There you go. So how are we flying? So passenger numbers, as you can see, the the real key indicator here is that top flat line. So what we've done is we've come out of the COVID and we're really sitting at just over 900,000 packs on average. So all the wiggles and waggles of COVID are gone and you're seeing that next line down in 23, 24, a good trend. So we come out of winter and activity increases. So as you'd expect in a normal world. Financials go hand in hand. So when people fly, we make money. So you can see again, those two, the red and the orange lines going hand in hand. So that's really cool. And passenger numbers are not where we really wanted them to be. We forecasted about 9.40 for the year and we're probably going to do about 9.20 at the current run rate. So it's just, we're all seeing that in in business, people are just not flying for whatever reason. So but February is the first month that we've actually achieved budget. So that's that's the first month in the in the year. So long may that continue. All that flows through to the numbers. So revenues down because passenger numbers aren't where we wanted them to be. What we're doing is holding costs. So again, we were going to do a lot more R and M stuff. So we're just holding our belt to make sure that from a bottom line point of view and a cash point of view, we've got our nose in front. So passenger numbers down 3%, revenue down 4%, they go hand in hand. But we're holding our costs. So long may that continue. So you all come to the airport, you see a whole lot of stuff going on. So just putting it into words, there's some pics that you'll relate to after this. Resilience, so the stormwater stuff is underway. We've got to make sure that when it rains hard, it all goes away and doesn't inundate the runway. Safety, we've increased the number of people in the rescue fire team up to nine. So that's an optimal number for rosters and cover. It's all about safety. Airbus has been introduced and is going well, good patronage every day. So that's great. Both ends of the terminal have been finished. So we built the terminal and we had a couple of bookings that needed to be finished. So we've we're doing that right now. So you'll see the improvements at the south end with Airport House. If you walk across from Value Car Park, you'll have a nice experience instead of a interesting experience. And at the north end, around the control tower, we're cleaning all that up and putting in EV chargers for staff and airport staff and more private car parks. So just finishing that off. Go Rentals, so the change in the Value Car Park entrance, so you come in and go left now, that's part of that development at the south. And therefore, Go Rentals is the first of many who look to bring their servicing operation onto the airport. So saving all that petrol running backwards and forwards to the off-site location. So that's been a good outcome. Runway Walk, again a cracker this year, $11,000 raised for charity and everyone enjoyed the day. So that's been a great success. And we also partnered with the hospice around the Christmas tree charity events. We raised over $40,000 for them. We've documented our plan around our partnership plan with Maori and that's rolling out. We're looking at other things in hand in hand with that. So that's really good. Hangar Two is now a lovely building instead of an eyesore and and a great outcome with the Generation Global taking over that and bringing more business activity to the airport. Project Two Zero, the plan change is progressing. We've got the first big day in May, so we're working through that. And we've produced our interim report for six months, which you've all seen. So pickings are better than talking. So we're doing a heck of a lot of stuff promoting the region and getting people into the airport and enjoying the experience. Working with NRDA on an autumn campaign. And when people are there, just having a bit of fun for the kids, finding the Easter eggs and whatnot. Walk the runway, sponsoring the giants and just doing good community stuff to keep people happy. Talked about the private car park and Airport House, so just some pics around that. Generation Global and the Go Rentals changes. Accepting that we've got four months to go in the year, there's probably, in terms of what more to happen, we're looking for living wage accreditation at the airport. So that's what we pay as employer of choice. Around sustainability, we're looking at certified renewable energy options. So that's underway. We're talking to many parties about the Jenkins Creek Bridge and Car Park opportunity. So we own land over the Jenkins Creek that we're looking to develop for a car park, the Value Car Park ultimately. We've got the apron upgrade happening, so the due diligence on that's continuing. My colleague here is having fun with the climate disclosure reporting setup, so that's happening. We've got independent audit going on at the moment around health and safety to make sure that from a governance point of view, we're doing the right thing and getting critiqued on that. We've got the five yearly noise audit underway, so that's our obligations under the resource consent plan, cultural framework. So we're looking at providing some history in the terminal from where we're from our journey, where we've come from in the region, marketing, doing more promotions of NRDA. And we've got several people knocking on our door about new building developments around the precinct. So no bell, so I beat the bell. How's that?
Excellent. Very good way to start the presentations for the day. So there's now 15 minutes for questions. And so if the questioners can also stick to the timeframe, we'll be good to go. Mayor Smith and then Deputy Mayor Brian.
Firstly, can I congratulate you, Mark, on the appointment to the Government Review Panel on the Integro Island Ferry Service? I know it goes beyond the airport, but it's actually a real compliment to the confidence that we have running Nelson Airport, that the government would see us. And we have a huge interest both as Nelson Tasman and successfully coming to a solution for that Inte Island Ferry Service. That is as important as a state highway for the top of the south. My question is with respect to the Generation Global investment in Hangar Two. Obviously exciting from an aviation point of view of having that business. Do they now own the hangar? What's the scale of the investment that they've made in that Hangar Two? What sort of the the terms of their lease there? And are there other opportunities for us to grow that cluster of aviation industries that we have based at Nelson Airport from an economic development perspective?
Sure. Through the chair. So obviously the commercials are sensitive, but it's it's a ground lease arrangement. And that was really what was the best option at the time in terms of other options for that building. So I think from an outcome point of view, that was best option. We didn't have many other options. But to your question around that whole opportunity with general aviation, we are certainly pursuing, you know, more complimentary aeronautical services in that in that area north of Hangar Two. You know, we've got several, you know, touched on several aeronautical players looking to upgrade and build, you know, bespoke facilities.
The piece I wanted to tease out, and if it is commercially sensitive, you're happy to say, is the airport company owns the land under Hangar Two. The global generation have made a major investment into the building. Is the building now owned by the airport or is the the building above the land owned by Generation Global as part of the deal that you negotiate? It's no criticism, just wanting to understand what the airport company owns and and what it doesn't in terms of going forward. I was very worried, that was a building that was very deteriorated, it didn't have a major investment in it. Actually, it needed to put a bulldozer through it and had all sorts of complexities and was more of a liability. But just interested going forward, does the airport company own the physical building or does the leaseholder in Global Generation?
Through the chair. So Generation Global own the building.
Own the building. Thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Brian.
Thank you Mayor Tim, through the chair. Thank you Mark and Adrian for the report. Really interesting to see all the activity going on at the airport and developments, which leads me to ask the question, with all this development, will you have to look to increase landing fees? Or will that be covered by rentals? Or how are you expecting to get extra revenue from all of this? Through the chair. So the 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 funding model for airports and probably Auckland's probably top of mind at the moment. So when you spend money on aeronautical facilities like runways and terminals, that's that's basically the bank that you go back to the airlines to fund through the through the passenger levy or whatever. Other investments have to stand on their own two feet. So if you if we're building buildings for tenants or whatever, they have to pass the, you know, the due diligence or return on investment, things like that. So. Yeah. And certainly the ask, some of the catalyst was the question, for the question was around the media in Auckland. Are we looking to increase the, and I understand that's one of the airports that most of passengers go to. Is there any steps that we can take to alleviate that? We can't, we can't really influence Auckland. But, you know, if we have something that happens and we have to spend a whole lot of money, you know, our deal with the airlines is, we can go back to them and ask, please, please circumnice them more. But other, it's a five-year deal and then you just create the the database and you go back to the airlines and renegotiate every five years.
Thank you. Could I just get a probably refinded a bit closer? It is a little.
Yeah, I'll stand up.
Thank you. Councillor Kenamot.
Thank you. And through the chair, Mark, also I'll read it. Sorry. Thank you very quick. Fly through your report. Why are you inlet forum planting some plants adjacent to the airport? Correct me if I'm wrong. And the planting of some shrubs or plants near the airport somewhere? Are you aware of it?
In the peninsula, so to the southwest corner, below the golf course, that's not our land. So that's.
Nelson City Council, according to Mayor Smith.
Sorry. Okay, wrong person then. I'll let aside, I'll talk to NCT.
Yeah. Could I just go councillor Mailing?
Just quickly, Mark, and look, I always enjoy going to the airport. There's so many things going on. And I saw you there at the air ambulance launch, I think. Hybrid planes, any updates on that from the airlines at all?
Through the chair. Not really. I mean, I think the 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 simple answer is there's a lot of talk. But, you know, whether it sounds there or in New Zealand, they're all going through the, I guess, the joys of trying to get to the the truth, what is the truth? And everyone's got a view and everyone's marketing, whether it's hydrogen or electric or hybrid. And we are just sitting in the grandstand, taking our time. We don't want to get into a bleeding edge scenario where we want to spend any money on it. So we'll just tuck in behind and see what happens.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Stella.
Thanks, Mayor Tim. Look, congratulations on working towards being a living wage employer and the work you're doing on the climate disclosure reporting. If I could ask for one thing that in my mind is essential for any airport is to include scope three emissions in your carbon reporting, that is best practice and other airports are doing it. Some choose to just include emissions from operations in and around the airport, landing or taking off. I think Auckland Airport includes the whole flight. I think it's essential because it just acknowledges the integral part of airports and aviation overall, which is quite a high emission sector. And I think there's been some talk about whether it's a just situation when passengers turn up to the airport and there's some big display around carbon zero or carbon positive and so on. It gives sort of the impression that what passengers are doing is a fine thing environmentally. But if we did include the script three emissions, we wouldn't be having that messaging.
So so is the question, are you including scope two emissions in the climate reporting?
That's my request. Looking to hear thoughts on that, scope three emissions.
Through the chair. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we, yeah, we're working through a comprehensive risk analysis for the airport at the moment, building towards climate disclosure reporting. And where possible, as you know, scope three emissions, it's quite comprehensive. And so we're looking to make improvements in terms of our reporting in that area. At the moment, we're still focused primarily on scope one and scope two because it's what we can control. We recognise that scope three is, we are an enabler. You know, the airport itself has very low carbon emissions, but it's the actual aircraft activity. And yes, we'd be looking to improve our reporting in that area. But once more, it depends on the, you know, it all comes down to the the data we have as well and making improvements in those areas. So we are committed to improving our scope three reporting, if that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you. If there is nothing further, thank you very much. Thanks for coming along, presentation and sticking so closely to time and answering questions. And so we remain on time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So no pressure, just call Nelson, but. Oh, and Mark, could you just distribute the PowerPoint that you put up? Okay, it will be sent out. Thanks very much.
Apologies for lateness, Mr Chair.
Yeah, I know you've made a nice trip out to Richmond and back.
Yeah.
That's very.
We sat there in the dark and we were quarter of an hour early. We were so proud of ourselves, weren't we? And then we slowly woke up.
Every day is better when you start it in Richmond, Mel. Matt, Hugh, welcome. Over to you in terms of presentation and then questions.
Ina Kuta. Firstly, apologies from Paul Zeeland. He's, I think, just on his last day on the heathy track at the moment. So he can't be here today. I think everyone knows Matt McDonald, who's GM Operations. Just thought it'd be useful to to bring Matt here. The picture you're looking at is a two cruise day we had earlier this cruise season, two vessels in town one morning, which is great for the community. The cruise season is now over. I think we had eight vessels this this time round. Look, our approach, we just split up our presentation to two parts. The first is the 2024 half year. And everyone, I think, has got the interim report. So it's really just a snapshot of summarising up that. Then the second half, I'll talk to the looking forward, which is really an insight into the statement of corporate intent, which will be heading your way at the end of the month. Matt.
Yeah, Morena. Look, the first six months of the year for us, probably anyone that's had a look at any port company results that have been published recently, ours is a bit of a rinse and repeat. Your business is business is challenging, particularly for exporters. So we're looking at our cargo performance there. Short story, green's green's good. And and what's showing as pink is obviously bad there. So some of those key commodity sectors for us, logs, processed timber, breed largely MDF and that, and the wine industry in particular have really struggled. You know, market conditions, I suppose, if you wanted to to summarise that, worth noting your apples. So the the back end of the export of last season's crop was was really strong. There was a really strong tail to that. So that was a positive. We've seen actually an increasing number of vehicles. So what is that? That's really a lot of the Honda, new Hondas that move in into the country through Nelson. So you probably probably caught us pleasantly by surprise. Those are probably the highlights out of that. Thanks Hugh. And then the financials, you look, I mean, again, a lot of a lot of the wrong colour and that really reflecting how that cargo flows through to the bottom line. But probably more than that, you know, not all, not all revenue and not all cargo for us is created equal. Some of the stories in the revenue line that you you see there are our storage activities. So which is really a reflection of lack of cargo movement that we've seen in previous years. Actually, the cargo, although it's been lower, has probably flowed better. So that has a, I suppose, a much a more, a more, more impactful, or more impactful for us in terms of our revenue. And you've seen that that's played out around the country. I think ports of Auckland were talking a number like 40 million down at six month in terms of their storage revenue. Look, at the expense, at the expense line, the, you know, the challenges around increased cost of business payroll is one. We've probably had maintenance and again, probably, you know, we're not in a position where we can just choose to defer maintenance. That's maintenance for key assets that we need to invest into to keep operating. So a challenging picture there. If you look at the interest line, actually, and I don't want to try and repeat the presentation that that Daryl ran through, explaining those swaps around IHL. But in the revenue line, you've seen the benefit of the swaps. The counter for that is increased interest that we're seeing at the moment. So, you know, the net, the net profit to tax at that six month period is well down. I was just looking at through the business, through our stakeholder lens, you know, some highlights, we've seen the return of the ANL Transat service. So that's an important thing for our exporters. I was seeing some new cargo moving through the port, the mineral sands out of Westport as well as Estelle Water, moving reasonably significant volumes of water that into China. Actually, that started off in our inland port in Marlborough is is well underway now. On the environmental space, a couple of highlights there. So Toyota accreditation or certifications just come through and just pick out the electric crane, the investment of that. That's all on track for later this calendar calendar year. On the people's side, a lot of a lot of work, I suppose, improving safety. If we broadly put it that way, two, two big things there. One is just our traffic management layout beside us. It still remains a very constrained site for all the things that we need to do on the site. So there's been a lot of work going on in that space to make make it a safer place, both for our own staff as well as other users on the port. And for our own stewarding team, a lot of a lot of time and energy going into improving that as well. Again, that's a nationwide area of focus. And I think like, if you looked across the workforce, some some roles were finding easier to fulfil. But, you know, post pandemic, the likes of our stewarding team in particular still remain very hard to fill those kinds of those kinds of roles. And, you know, the the interest in people working at weekends or working at night time is much reduced from where it was, even in, you know, even in the current financial environment. The community space, so for our leadership team, board, senior management team, Tarete, Teteriti and Tiganga training with Johnny O'Donnell happened, which was great for all of us. And our sponsorship, sponsorship programmes carried on. And then just some highlights in the shareholder space. So a new pilot vessel on the way, we've implemented an infrastructure charge was delayed from what we'd thought around, you know, the the start of the financial year, but it's now sort of proceeding at a, I suppose, an increased amount to what we'd what we'd originally budgeted. So that's good. Work on the master plan complete and the redevelopment underway.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, if I look forward then, so this graph looks backwards to 2016 and then forwards to 2027. And what we're looking at here is cargo. So the top line is forestry, read primarily logs. The next line down is containers. And then you're down into the bulk fuel bulk others. So the the bulk of the business is dominated by container and log movement. From where we are, you can see those flat years after really good trading years in 2018, 2019. Then we moved into COVID flatter years in both areas. And you're seeing two forces driving up those areas. One is the log harvest is predicted to be bigger. One is the log harvest is predicted to be bigger. And so that's driving up that top line. And then we're seeing a steady recovery in processed timber exports, wine industry recovering and holding a good apple crop. So that's driving up that blue line. How this flows through to profit. So what you have here is net profit after tax. The interesting line is the is the yellowy line. The variance between that line and the solid blue bars where above and below is is property revaluations. So again, you've seen those good 2017, 18, 19, good cargoes coming through. The impact of the Kaikura earthquake and the diversion of cargo. Then you're into flat COVID periods and that pickup we're seeing going forward in the light grey. Again, driven by two slings, the cargo and the basic improvement in the in the economy as well as the infrastructure charge that we've put in place. So, you know, that charge alone, which is put on place of all cargo, probably brings us about five million dollars by 2027. And just noting in there that the yellow dot in 2026, we're currently forecasting an impact of seven point two million. So that's down on a segment in ten budget of nine million. And really, that's just that impact of trading is really knocking us around. Mayor Tim, I think, was that the bell? It did seem to come.
I I don't know. I'm not used to a bell going, but there was a bell. I don't know what it means. Strictly in these establishments. There you go. It was the bell.
Right. Well, if that's a bell, I will be even quicker. Two minutes, is that what I'm saying? And look, following through that state performer lens, very quickly, interesting things. In the customer space, we're doing quite a lot of work in the technology side with Polaris. And we've got through our master plan, a number of projects coming through, climate related disclosures, and I picked up the scope three issue. So at the moment, we report scope three based on what we control. We've just started reporting scope three on our suppliers. And the next stage would be to move to report scope three on our supply, oh, sorry, on our customers. And that's obviously the the vessels arriving. People beginning to actually use a bit of AI for controlling and improving safety. So that's an interesting move. Community, hopefully everyone can turn up on Sunday to our open day. You'd be most welcome. Shareholders, you can see in what we provided in that earlier graph, we're very focused on getting our return on equity above five percent. I think I will close today.
I I get the impression that a double ding is.
Doubles bad.
So you've been you've been double dinged. The things you learn. So thank you very much, Hugh and Matt, for the presentation. Questions? Do we double ding questions? Oh, oh, so councillors can ramble. Okay, all good. Councillor Mayling.
I won't ramble. You'll know there's a good apple crop out there this year. But what will the availability of containers, because in the past, we've seen some of that crop diverted to other ports, which is a terrible thing. I wanted to go at a about port. So will there be enough containers available in a timely manner?
Well, I think right at the moment, we're in a very good position. I think we've had a really good inflow of empty containers and and that's driven up part of our last two months' performance. But I think we have this question every year. I mean, the the shipping lines promise us great things. But once that first, the backlog is depleted, then it gets tough. So, look, two comments again. One, the shipping lines appear to be on schedule and and backing up good service. They're talking a good game. But I suspect we're still going to have perhaps problems. Matt, anything else to add?
Yeah, probably just the other thing to add there, I think there's a fair bit of awareness around around what Q two looks like with regard to impacts on the Red Sea situation. So but probably just to highlight too, actually, early on in the season, we're actually, some apples that were moving on the road to Napier are now being shipped to Napier for packing there with one of the exporters as well. So, yeah, a positive start, but.
Thank you, councillor Pakey Pakey.
Well, through the chair, I guess, I'll ask one that's not about spreadsheets and some other bits and pieces. So unfortunately, I see Aaron's not here with you guys this morning. But you mentioned in your in the report there that that you have the TDT and and the Tikanga training, which I will note that the Tikanga was spelt wrong. That was a bit unfortunate. But that's okay. So really, with regard to that training, what does it look like? Can you paint a picture of what it looks like? And and the second part is that, you know, what, how does it apply to or how are you applying it to your general business?
So the 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 training, if you like, is is one of the actions coming out to the Iwi Maori partnership plan that we concluded earlier this year. So the the training was a full day course with Johnny and two trainers, just going through a reflection on on the treaty and then the interpretations from that. And then how Karakia and other Tikanga can be incorporated and also its purpose and how it can be incorporated into port life. So I think the learnings from the first purpose that was a better understanding through, I think we had thirty odd people go through that course in the leadership side. And then what we have is a growing use of Tikanga, like Karakia, et cetera, in our meetings and our communications. So the next phase is really to increase the amount of Tureo and use of of Tikanga around the port. And that's part of that plan and roll out of that plan.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Brian.
Thank you, Mayor Tim, for you. Thank you. Nathan, Hugh, for the presentation. Appreciate that. Just a couple of questions from me. Just I see there was quite an increase in the sand revenue and I've noticed quite a bit more being trucked to the port. I understand there's some logistical challenges with the space it's taking up. Is that an issue going forward?
Yeah, through the chair. I mean, the short story is we don't expect this to continue on beyond the next few months. We're probably expecting, I've got one more shipment over the weekend actually, and then then maybe two more. I mean, the West Coast mineral sands plan is to ship that directly from Westport and then load that with a barge onto a, you know, onto a mothership in, you know, off Westport. So that's probably the end game. Look, we've we've used a little bit of our log storage space for storing the for storing the sand. It's like any anything else on the port though, you know, we juggle around cargo, we juggle around space. So, yeah, it's not been it's not been easy, but it's been good cargo, good revenue for us.
Thank you. And just in relation to the one of the slides talked about a green loop of Marlborough, was it quite sure what that was about? Please.
That's our aspiration for that key connect loop in particular, that we'll incorporate hydrogen trucks on that. So we're in discussions with a hydrogen provider and a key transportation partner as to when and how that can happen and how we sort out that.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Tim.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you, Hugh and Matt, for your presentations this morning. Always interesting. My question is around the current financial environment and it straight away sparks a thought in my mind that are you now, as a result of this environment, searching for efficiencies and savings within the organisation? It's paramount at this sort of time and in this climate. And then I go on thinking about automation and the benefits that could come from. And also, but most important of all, is innovations, because that's crucial, I think, in an organisation such as yours for the ongoing success, being ready and adaptable to innovations.
So certainly in the area of cost savings and efficiency, that that's been a key driver. You know, for at least eighteen months, we've been really putting the hammer down on that. And so while we're targeting that improvement in return on equity and assets, the revenue line, we found a strategy to drive that, but we're also looking to drive down cost. At the moment, in the tougher times, we've got effectively a sinking lid on staff recruitment, which is really just challenging every every appointment we make and seeing whether there are alternative ways to do that. And that's driven some efficiencies. In terms of innovation, Matt's leading a project that we just restarted again, which is a continuous improvement path. So while we've had that as an underlying issue, we're now looking to re-energise that. Automation, we particularly in our warehouses, we're looking at automation issues and alongside adding racking in, just seeing whether we can do things more efficiently. We're procuring a number of new forklifts and that is part of a feeding into a potential automation improvement going forward.
Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Mayor Smith, last question.
You optimistically reported on the eight cruise ships that we had through Port Nelson over summer. There's always a bit of a question with the cruise ships in terms of the contribution they make to regional economy and pleased that you're accommodating them. The bit I'd be interested, Hugh, is is the way in which you price your services for the cruise ship industry, just the cost recovery or do you get a margin or is it a loss? Or how does how does it work commercially for the port? Global estimates is that that sector of tourism is going to continue to grow greatly. We want to be part of the action, but actually also we want to make sure that they're meeting their share of the costs of running a big piece of infrastructure that the port company runs on behalf of our two councils.
So if we take the if the cruises paid their fair share of infrastructure cost, you know, the wharf and and the space they take up beyond the wharf, then they are marginally positively contributing. If we look at them as a marginal benefit, given that that wharf is there anyway, primarily for containers, then on the marginal benefit, it's a significant benefit or a material benefit. So in general, we see cruises as good. We'd like to see their numbers increase to around twenty twenty five. I think above that would have problems with the rest of our cargo and throughput, but there is capacity to grow that market.
Any sense for season twenty four, twenty five with bookings coming in as to whether it'll be more or less or about the same than the eight vessels we had over the previous summer?
I think at this stage, we're thinking similar. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Hugh, Matt, coming in and presenting, almost making it without the double ding. But, you know, room to improve for next time.
He's just struggling with the efficiency.
I am. It's a slick operation you're on here. Next up, Hugh remains in his seat and Sue, welcome on Zoom. Welcome to the meeting, Sue.
Thank you.
Quite. I'm not sure who's leading, but I'll go to you, Sue, and you can, if if it's Hugh taking over then, by all means, you introduce you.
Thank you, Mayor. Hugh's going to lead the presentation since he's in the room and for efficiency of running the presentation. But I'll be very happy to take any particular questions once we get to that point.
Good as gold. Thanks, Hugh. Well, thanks, Sue. Look, if I could also introduce Chris Yardley, who's with me. So Chris is finance manager at Port Nelson. He's stepping in as acting CEO for us at the moment. But most importantly for this discussion, he is the, through the service level agreement, Port Nelson provides the support to IHL for all finance matters. Just quickly flicking through some of the highlights in the last year, you know, while it's taken a while for IHL to get to this point, the last six months has been busy. So just those dates, seventeen Jan, the IHL's incorporated July, we've got transfer of the assets. Westpac is consolidated and swapped out with LGFA in September and with the refinancing coming through six October. That improvement on commercial loans was rounded about a hundred basis points, which is, which was what we were targeting. And we're on track with the to report under the XIB standards for climate change by the end of the year. In terms of active matters at the moment, we are in the market for a executive. So IHL will have a part time executive dedicated to itself. You know, our view is that improves its transparency and independence. A treasury committee has been established and that will meet, I believe, quarterly with our consultant Bancorp to look at rates and hedges, et cetera. And a director is well, is in the process of being appointed into that committee. I've commented on the climate change reporting. A key piece of work the board is working on is the dividend policy. And I believe that comes up at the twenty five March board meeting. At which time we sign off, or the board signs off the statement of intent. And there is work for with both PNL and NAL to look at long term funding and the timing of that. But I think the ten year forecast that we've shown previously looks roughly on on track. I'll pass over to Chris now just to pick up some of the finance matters.
Thanks, Hugh. Yeah, with this, as you've mentioned, with assistance from Bancorp, it's my team that looks after the treasury and financial operations of IHL. We've just come through our first half year reporting cycle and just noting that IHL is currently compliant to all financial and funding metrics. Here we're showing the long term debt profile for IHL in grey. The red lines are the fixed rate cover bands that are allowable under policy. These are based on maturity and quantum and the blue and green are the fixed rate positions that currently IHL holds. These are strategically positioned to be at policy minimums currently. This all flows through to the projected cost of funds for IHL's. Six point one percent. This is forecasted to drop over the next two years to settle at about five. So then it comes forward to the risks and opportunities. So as you've heard from both subsidiaries, there is tough trading conditions out there, which may flow through into dividends received at IHL level. But on the upside, there is ability to for IHL to position itself as interest rates are forecasted to decrease. Yeah, so in summary, IHL's operating as it should and well positioned to cover any drop in interest rates observed. Any questions?
Through the chair. Well, I think that that's all we wanted to cover unless Sue wanted to add anything.
No, I've got nothing further to add. Thank you.
Okay, open for questions. Councillor McKenzie.
Thank you through the chair. That's all good. I'm just wondering, is there any any good news story that you can give me about improvements we've made either through shared services or joined up procurement or any of those other benefits that we intended to get through the formation of IHL?
We have had discussions with, we've been PNL with the airport around insurance. And that's just proved a bit trickier than we thought. The port is in a port collective, which has benefits vis a vis where the airport is sitting. We are looking at from the property development side and we're starting conversations there to make sure that we don't overlap and and compete with each other. And the other area we're working on at the moment is environmental reporting to make sure we're aligned and supporting each other. I think with the opportunity of a new CFO at the airport and a new CFO joining us shortly, I think those opportunities of further cost savings can be investigated. So, look, we're not as advanced as we would have liked, but certainly we're progressing that relationship.
Thank you. councillor Courtney then, Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Thank you again, Hugh and Chris, for your presentations.
Did I understand it correctly that all loans now, previous loans held by the port and the. Airport companies have now been transferred over to the local government finance agency?
So all, all the loans from the subsidiaries go through I H L. To primarily the, to LGFA, but there's a portion of loan that sits with Westpac. And that's at the sort of floating readily available funding area.
Is that sooner than expected, that transfer over? I thought it was going to be a progressive.
I think the, originally we sort of flagged that we might take it in stages depending on the interest rate that was offered and the, the appetite of LGFA. I think at that first offering, we were happy to go with putting the whole lot across.
Ah, yes. Right. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, councillor Courtney, Mayor Smith.
On the first slide, it made reference to board members being elected. Didn't it mean appointed?
Correct. Yes.
And the second piece is, is just in terms of the annual report for twenty three, twenty four. Would it be possible for I H L to quite specifically identify for us? The exact benefit in the twenty three, twenty four year of the I H L formation. You've made reference to the fact that we've got the benefit of about a hundred base points on the debt and appropriate question from councillor Courtney about that. We've also got some extra costs though, associated with I H L. It would be really good for the community and I think for elected members to understand what's the. Net benefit in the first year of operation of I H L of the new structure in net terms. So it's not a question today, happy to leave it to the end of the financial year thirty June. But if that figure could be identified at that time, either in the annual report, in your next report to us. I think it would be helpful for elected members and the public.
And just a point of clarity, it's very difficult to look in a single year because. At, at one point you take that swap benefit and it looks like in the single year you made a, a three million dollar uplift. But the issue is in future years, then you've had the cost of that benefit upfront.
Understand that we have made those swaps, particularly where the interest rates have been quite volatile and at the time you did those. What you should be able to do though is to say that, well, if we'd start with the old structure. These were the rates, these are a hundred base points lower, that's what the benefit. And it may also be that there have been some one-off transition costs to I H L that we've incurred in this year. So I openly accept your point, Hugh, that needs to be given context as to the impact on that financial year. And the likely impact in the future years, but it'll be good to have some. Hard numbers rather than speculative numbers because inevitably beforehand, we were assuming we could get a low interest rate. But it's not until you actually go into the marketplace and do it. And that's where I think we owe it to the community to say exactly what. The benefit was for that financial year as well as what that impact is in the future years.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just make a comment on, on that question, Chair. I agree with Hugh that it will be hard to be definitive to a specific number. And there are of course all of the upfront costs. What we tried to demonstrate to you in November was that the anticipated. Saving of one percent is actually achievable. And so I think we can take your point on board and look at how we might present that information. For the benefit of the community, but I think we, we need to just think through how we would do that. Because it could otherwise look like a very volatile number. Because of the swap position from year to year and the volatility of interest rates.
Yeah, and I think that the context will be critically important and the explanation, but the underlying numbers, there will be a number of people who will be looking to see. Because, you know, there will be some degree of interest amongst people to see what the benefits were, how compared to what we went into it on the basis of, well, what the rationale was, so. We'll leave it with you.
Performance versus promise.
Righto. If there's nothing further, thank you very much. Fast learner Hugh, you didn't get dinged at all in that presentation.
Seems we're happy here.
Thank you.
Right. Thanks, Sue. Next up, Lisa, I think you're on Zoom. And there's a number of other council staff supporting you in the presentation around the urban development entity investigation. Who are also on Zoom, but I will come over to Lisa, oh, or John, who's in the room.
Tenokoto Kator, call John Red, Toko Ringo, so I'm one of the group managers in Tasman District. And I've been given, if you recall at the last joint committee, we. We said we'd come back and close the loop on the urban development entity. And on the screen, we've got Bryley and Lisa who, if you want to delve deep, that's where you go. I'll just give you a quick overview as to where we got to. So I think the report's really, really clear. It was funded through Better Off Funding. It was to look at whether or not there's any merits in an urban development agency where we could work collectively to get better residential intensification outcomes. We had, it's fair to say we had a fair amount of trouble with the consultant that was engaged. The company, one of the companies did cease to do, ceased in business about halfway through the project. But we saw it through to the first stage gate, which fundamentally gave a bit of an overview as to what actually this, this entity could look like. But the outcome was, it was probably a no-go, so we decided to stop at that gate. And I think the funding, we, we spent of the hundred fifty K, we spent around half of that, which we, I think from memory. We've retained that funding to use for other things. But if there's anything specific, I'll hand over to Lisa Bryley or Dwayne to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks, John. Is there anything Lisa, Dwayne, you want to add before I open questions? I think John summarized it pretty well at a high level. It was always going to be a challenging conversation if the Three Waters thing never eventuated and the second tranche of funding never came through, so. That was always going to be a, a significant challenge to have been financially feasible, which is pretty much what was demonstrated through the reports. If not, are there any questions? Mayor Smith.
That was set aside was a hundred and fifty. My understanding from the report is about seventy six K. What happens to the balance? Do we have the capacity to be able to reallocate? The balance of a hundred and fifty grand to other projects? And, and if so, is there any advice from council officers on that reallocation?
I'll hand that over to Bryley, I think, because I think we've already spent the money.
Yes, so through the chair, if you can hear me okay?
Yes, we can, Bryley.
So in terms of Tasman's part of the budget that got relocated, that's been, that's gone to the Kingsland Planting Project for planting for the next financial year. I'm not sure what's happened. I think Nelson's money got relocated, but I'm not sure where to.
Anybody you'd shed some light?
Through the chair, I'm not, if you go back into the pool, I don't know if Nikki McDonald's present, might be our advisor.
Oh, Lisa, you're, you're very roboty, so it's rather hard to.
Okay, it's my first, it's my first Zoom from the far north, so yeah, bear with me. I don't know the answer to that, but if Nikki McDonald is in the room, she, she will know where our funding has been relocated to.
Okay, well, so I guess it's a question you can find out later. Nigel?
That's fine. I can follow, I can follow that up separately. I suspect my fellow Nelson councillors would be interested to know where that balance of money has gone. And so we could have Nikki just drop a nose around the Nelson City councillors to clarify.
Great. Any, ah, councillor McKenzie.
Thank you very much. Through the chair. I mean, I, I accept the, the report and its findings and the conclusion that basically it's a no-goer. I, I'm not an expert in these matters. I, I guess the question I'm left with is that at a point in time. We obviously have the expectation that there might be an opportunity here. And that we've spent a significant sum of money, regardless of where it came from, in order to get the report done. So, I mean, are we happy with the. Findings of the report and the quality of the report and that it gives us confidence that we can just put a line under it and say, okay. Nothing to be gained there, let's move on.
As usual, my team knows I'll defer to Bryley or Dwayne on that one, please.
I'm going to suggest Dwayne for that one.
Through the chair, look, it was, the way this, this, the, the process was started was to answer a series of questions. And we always knew that there was at least two or three steps in the process where. The answer would say, don't proceed further. You know, one of the first questions we wanted to ask ourselves was. Would it make a difference to development and would it be feasible, meaning the council wouldn't continue to lose money on such an operation? And I think we're satisfied there's enough work to show that it's a, it's, it's probably not a feasible situation. And it probably indicates at best the case was marginal. And one of the things that I don't have to report went into a lot of detail on, but. You would have to invest substantial amounts of money and capital to, to get this going and. It didn't show at this point there was a feasible case for doing so, you know, I mean, if, if I was to speculate on a sum. You're probably looking at at least twenty million dollars in seed capital to get such a venture going. And you'd want to, you'd want some positive results in the early feasibility just to continue investigating that in my view. Before you started trying to form up a, a more thorough case around it. So to answer your question, yes, I think it suggests that it's a, probably not a viable prospect for council. And as has been alluded to in the report, Kangora has the powers. To do some of the stuff that we're talking about and is potentially interested in. Using some of those powers in Nelson Tasman. And so would actually, the circumstances have even changed further since the report was published. Because there's another entity with those powers who is interested potentially in deploying them here, which would make our case even harder.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Stalad.
Thanks, me Tim. The motion before us, I guess this is a procedural question to start with, is that we simply receive the investigation, its attachments. We're not going to get an opportunity to look at options and voting on where we want to go? Or has that happened already?
Well, we've placed, oh, we've placed in front of you officers' recommendations, that's up to yourself.
Okay, thank you. On page fifty-three, it states the viability of the project depends on wider economic benefits in the business case for the C C T O. Is the business case, would that be the next step or is one of these reports considered the business case?
Bryley, I don't know if you want to answer specifically.
I can talk to that. So, so yeah, like Dwayne said, we had a sort of a two-stage process. So first of all, investigate if it could be effective. If it could be feasible and if it was, then, then we were asking for a full business case to be developed that could then be used to get that next level of funding. But as it, as it wasn't feasible and there's not that next level of funding, the Better Off Funding, we didn't proceed to the, the full business case.
And just a few more questions if I may. On page fifty-one, there's a projected loss of a hundred and seventy-five to three hundred and fifty-eight K per development site. I was just interested in the term development site, is that a number of dwellings? And if so, how many might be on such a site?
Again, I'll defer, but I, I imagine there was significant modeling that, that occurred around what land was available for development. Don't there's anything more specific about Bryley?
No, it's in, it's in the model behind, I don't think I know the details, sorry.
So I might have to go answering that if I'm not too roboty.
No, 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 you're improving from the far north.
Oh, great. So the, what we asked them to test was amalgamating blocks of. Existing residential land with old dwellings on it. And we looked for the right locations to make the most market feasible kind of business case. And then to de, put those together, subdivide them, take away old dwellings. And also tested with or without servicing those. So the idea was that we were de-risking and providing the. Intensification development market with titles that were ready to go. So that business case there is based on selling empty lots. We didn't venture into a U D E entity that would conglomerate land and build dwellings and sell. Because that's seen as beyond the council's capacity.
I guess if I can sort of cut to the hub of it. We wouldn't want to be making a large loss if we went into this entity structure. But the projected loss of say two to three hundred grand per development site, if that was twenty dwellings, when, when they were only losing potentially. Eight thousand dollars per site, that doesn't seem like a huge amount, but if it was a hundred and seventy grand or so per dwelling site, then that would be. More of a reason not to go ahead. So my question is development site, that might be anything from ten or twenty dwellings or is. What, what kind of number of dwellings might that be?
Yeah, so it's lots, so it would be per lot that we would be selling. And because the idea was that we would conglomerate three to six to ten adjoining sections and then subdivide them with intensity. So it could be ten to thirty lots, sort of as an example.
Great, thank you. And just finally, the report talks about the suboptimal outcomes of business as usual. In relation to housing stock, transport connectivity and so on. And, and I would add, you know, environmental, climate and community building aspects. Just to clarify, those suboptimal, suboptimal outcomes of business as usual haven't been quantified in the report. In the same way that the possible wider benefits haven't been quantified, whereas. Just the possible financials around the actual C C T O have been quantified. Is that the case? That was a question.
That final call, yeah, that final, the close-off report was a qualitative assessment, but yeah, like you say, with some financial information.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Walker.
Good, thank you. Yeah, quite an expensive exercise. And I guess councillor McKenzie has already alluded to, is the report helpful? I guess for me, it's like, how does this exercise manifest into actually addressing some of the housing needs within wider community? And did, did it take, could we not have gleaned some understanding at stage one without embracing stage two and that cost?
I'll just answer the second part of the question. So it was pretty much stage one where we, where we made the stop point. We didn't do, that's, that's how come it came in at half, half the, the budget. And we didn't do that full business case once we got to that sort of no-go point.
I, I think councillor also, the, the world's changed so much over the last sort of six, six months. With legislative change, R M A reform, all that side of, you know, this was done under. In that, in the context of all that going on in the background. And so the world's changed a bit. And in terms of. The powers this would offer, well, what we suggested was Kaingora hold quite a lot of those powers. So we're having regular conversations with Kaingora as to where they could play in the game. Without creating a commercial entity to do it for us.
Yeah, through the chair, I just said, oh, sorry.
Sorry, Dwayne.
No, sorry, through the chair, I was just going to say, look, the kind of expertise we needed to figure out, would it make a difference and would it be feasible? I e, would we make, break even or better on, on these kind of arrangements? They weren't skills and knowledge that we had in-house, so we had to go seek some external expertise for that.
Well, hopefully there's some learnings from this to help moving forward. Thank you.
I think you councillor Walker, is there councillor Courtney?
I need some help with this. It's not normal, is it, for us to cut a business case off midstream? That's a little bit unusual. And I thought we were getting close to the answer from Trinity, councillor Trinity, when she asked her questions. But so mine is, what triggered the cutoff? And why didn't we follow through on it and, and complete the business case into a full business case? We'd got into it, it says here on three point five, a full business case wasn't completed. I didn't quite hear the, what the trigger was. I, I heard someone say it was a no-go point and I was sort of waiting there, but did, did I miss something?
Well, I'm happy to answer that, Mr Chair. Essentially not throwing good money after bad. You know, the, the, when we started this process, we wanted to understand. Whether what we did, if we started making, amalgamating this land made a difference and whether it would be a. At least cost break even type of arrangement for council. And the answer in particular, we got to the first one was probably, but and the second one was no. And, you know, we, we, when we originally discussed, at least at Tasman District Council, with this council, we talked about those thresholds. You know, thinking it would economically feasible, we would carry on, since we didn't think it was economically. Um, you know, thinking it would economically feasible, we would carry on, since we didn't think it was economically feasible, the report suggests that we stopped.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If there's nothing further, uh, oh, sorry councillor Deputy Mayor Brian.
I'm happy to move the resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you Deputy Mayor Brian, Mayor Smith, you're happy to second.
And speak to.
Yep, yes.
I, I'm very, I'm very supportive of the recommendation that's inherent in this report, that we do not spend further money incorporating the development of a urban development, uh, entity. Uh, I'm pleased it's not ratepayers money that was spent on the seventy-four thousand dollars of report than it is government money. Uh, in that, in my view, uh, these urban development agencies with the extra regulatory powers make good sense in some of the really big developments like the Docklands in Melbourne or Darling Harbour in Sydney. Uh, such an entity was sent up for the Viaduct Basin in Auckland. And the key thing is that these agencies have the power to be able to rejig roads and do infrastructure where you've got really complicated redevelopments of maybe port areas or railway lines. Uh, we're in a very different space in Nelson and Tasman, in my view, for us to go down the road of setting up an urban development authority would add very significant compliance cost to the development and are beyond the challenges that we quite appropriately have, uh, in the area of, of housing and others. Uh, I'm pleased the officers are recommending we don't call further public money down it because while it's, might be taxpayers' money, I still think we collectively around this table have a duty to make sure uh, that any dollars that we are spending, uh, uh, whether they are taxpayers' or ratepayers' dollars are being spent wisely. Uh, I've got a question mark as to whether we can actually look in the eye and say that we got good value for money for the seventy-four thousand, uh, in that uh, I am highly doubtful, uh, as to whether an urban development authority with all those inherent extra powers and checks and structure is appropriate for a region such as ours. Yes, we'll kick the tyres, uh, early on our officers have come to the conclusion not to go further and not to spend all the hundred and fifty grand that was set aside. And I think they have done, uh, the public a service in coming to us earlier and saying, hey, look, uh, our preliminary investigation shows that, and this is not the right pathway for us to go. And there are other initiatives and tools that we have available to us to facilitate appropriate housing development in our communities. And that's why I'm pleased to second the resolution.
Okay, thank you, it's been moved and seconded, so I will put the resolution, all those that, uh, knows been moved and seconded, do you wish to speak to the resolution?
Yes, I just want to say something, but it's not a great moment. Well, I just want to say it's a very responsible report and I want to thank the officers for producing it, I think to, um, cut off midstream is, uh, is quite brave, um, put it mildly, and, uh, the opportunities were explored. And it could have been a good opportunity and they were thoroughly explored by our officers. And we grow from ideas, we do, and this was an idea that needed to be looked at closely because of what it could have, the benefits it could have meant for this, uh, region, Nelson and Tasman, but, uh, now I'm happy to, uh, see it, uh, finish now. But I just am pleased with the way it was handled by our, our officers, thank you.
Thank you councillor Courtney, I will now put the resolution, all those in favour please say aye. Against carried, uh, we'll now break briefly, uh, before we go into committee and have the presentation from Tasman Bay's Heritage Trust, so.
It's easier to move into resolution beforehand for our technical people, so I will put the resolution if we go into confidential business.
Uh, move Mayor Smith, seconded, uh, councillor Dowler, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against carried, we will now break for five minutes, uh, and then come back with Tasman Bay's Heritage Trust.